Should be just a minute.
Okay. Have to say we're a pretty healthy looking bunch for the pandemic and all. Congratulations to all on your good health.
Billy said he's not coming, just so you guys know, couldn't make it.
Hey Dan, we're live on Facebook now.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 10th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. It's 7:04, we're getting started. Facebook link is just started. First thing I'll do is call roll.
It's 7:04, we're getting started, Facebook link is just.
Members, President, Vice Chairman, Richard Clark, are you, are you on? Alright, we've lost everything.
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Richard is here. Steve Chobin, click the board, are you present?
Here.
Lou Perrin, member, you're present?
Present.
Alright. Bill the Page, member, not present?
Dan, I think he'll be joining us later.
Okay. Ruski Leo, Associate Member, is also not present? Alright, we have Bill Scanlon, our Acton Town Planner, present?
Yes.
And Michelle, you're also on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. So get into our remote participation. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, the Dudley Planning Board will conduct its public meetings and hearings via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The Board encourages all members of the public to view and/or participate in the meeting through a personal computer or smartphone. The town of Dudley has chosen to use Zoom software for this purpose. Please download the program to the device of your choosing. Alright, so Billy, you said Russell on Facebook?
Yes.
Alrighty. So it is 7:06, we have a scheduled 7:05 continuation of a public hearing. Major site plan review, application submitted by Peter Bannister to provide a parking area for truck delivery vehicles at 263 West Main Street. Alright. Mr. Bannister, yes, see that you're on, hello, good evening.
Hi, how you doing?
Alright, is Jason going to join us as well, or just you this evening?
Um, yeah, he should be, yeah, I just talked to him.
I'm going to admit him now, Dan, I just saw.
Excellent, alright. So last week, we had a lengthy discussion on this. I think we made some progress, but not quite the progress we were hoping to. At the end of yesterday's last meeting, we were talking about the surface. Instead of an impervious surface, there was the talk of asphalt millings and/or a gravel surface. Jason, hello, how you doing? We just started.
Okay, hi.
So, all the board members have had a couple of weeks to think this over, we did hear from Graves Engineering as opposed to regarding the surface. Just kind of wanted to go through the roll call of the members and kind of get your take on the whole entire thing. Lou, if you don't mind, we'll start with you.
Okay, what are you looking for, Dan?
Just your comments, any kind of thoughts about the whole entire?
I, I, I'm okay allowing him to do millings, three inches of millings. What is the pitch, Rich? What's the pitch gonna be back there? What do you guys got, 2%, 3%? I mean, Jason, what's the pitch?
I'm checking right now, I think it's three and a half.
Three and a half, okay. So I'm okay with millings. Three inches of millings, I'd like to see a restriction on the GVWs. And the other thing I was thinking about is the far end of the field with the retent, is it retention pond? Was it like a small retention area? I think there should be some type of wooden guardrail pull up, put up down on that end, so there's no encroaching down there. And then find out what the hours of operation are, maybe have some limitations on hours of operation. But other than that, I'm okay with everything.
So you said the gross, the vehicle gross vehicle weight restrictions, no restrictions as far as number of vehicles or anything?
Well, what was the, what'd the plant call for, 3, 498 or something like that?
I don't, can't remember the exact number.
488.
488. So I, I, I don't have a problem with the 488, as long as there's none of the excess junk or construction equipment. The only problem I see moving forward is because it's gonna be a asphalt millings is management, traffic management control in there. I see that being an issue. So, and I know the fire chief had concerns about space, room to get in there with fire trucks, so I don't know how you guys are gonna do that with spraying lines. I, I really don't see the lines are gonna hold up. But I'm okay with the millings, as long as there's a GVW, the restriction, in my opinion, and a guardrail down by the retention area, and some type of hours of operation. That, that's kind of like where my mindset is, Dan.
Alright. Steve, your thoughts?
Yeah, I did some research on the subject because I, to be completely honest, I didn't exactly know what asphalt millings were. So now, based on what Graves Engineering has said and what I've read online regarding asphalt millings, I would be okay with asphalt millings. I am not okay with just gravel. I like the idea of the guardrail system. A guardrail that ran across the line at that edge so that we wouldn't, we would have a good barrier between the area that we are approving for parking and we wouldn't have a situation where the other vehicles or heavy equipment or anything like that, or, or those junk cars were pushed down that open field down there, you know, near the retention area or even past that point. In other words, I'm not so concerned about the lines because I understand to lose point that with asphalt millings, you can line asphalt millings, but the problem is that those lines don't stay. So then it becomes an issue where the owner's gonna have to keep going out there and relining it. And, you know, depending on what kind of weather and all these other factors, it's gonna be difficult. But I think if you, if you define the area by having the area covered with asphalt millings and having the wooden guardrail there to stop any potential overflow, I think that that, that could work. Regarding the fire chief's concern, again, without the lines there, I mean, it really falls on, on, Peter's gonna have to be the one who's in the end responsible for keeping those fire lanes clear. And if he doesn't keep them clear, then that's something that, I guess that would be a code enforcement issue for the fire chief, right? Just let him handle that.
Alright.
Oh, and the last comment I have is, again, I like the GVW idea. I believe at the last meeting, I had thrown out 16,000 GVW and Peter had agreed to that. If he's still good with that and the rest of the board members are, then I would say we could stay with the 16,000 GVW as opposed to getting into licensed classes, because I did some research on that too, and I didn't like some of the stuff I was finding about the possibility of some larger vehicles being able to be parked there just because license class was lower or whatever.
A quantity of vehicles, the number of spaces, you okay with that?
Yeah, the, the spaces that he's requesting, I would be okay with that, provided that he's, you know, willing to meet us on these other requirements, the asphalt millings and the guardrail and the restriction of, you know, on GVW.
Alright, thank you. Richard, any comments you might have?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple, to echo some of the concerns already mentioned relative to the fire department. I believe the chief mentioned a 20-foot access area. And drove through there yesterday and I didn't do a very scientific survey there, but I suspect that it's less than 20 feet going into the property. And it looks like there are a number of players as far as that building is concerned. And I think it's gonna need some coordination on Mr. Bannister's part to make sure that that 20 feet is available for the fire department emergency access at all times. Also, I am not particularly in favor of the gravel. I would mention too that this is kind of a surprise, I think, for most of us, but obviously it looks like we're having opportunity to set something of a precedent here and given the fact that something's going on across the street, we may see more of these down the road. Somewhat a surprise again. And also, it looks like we have some input from the Conservation Commission. And Bill, I think you were in receipt of that letter, I don't know whether you wanted to read that now, or is Mr. Bannister aware of that?
I did send it to Jason and Peter today. I can try to pull it up.
We are aware of that.
Okay, I understand it says, as I read it, notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, has that been filed?
It has not, it will be.
As, okay. So is, is any action we take this evening pending approval by the Conservation Commission or are we independent agents at this point?
I think we were certainly going to condition on it that they file for the notice of intent. And then before they would open, they would have to receive the approval of the COMCOM.
So Bill, if I understand you correctly, we could move forward with a vote tonight, provided that we just add the provision that it's contingent on them filing a notice of intent with Conservation.
Yeah, I don't think you need to wait for them to act, I think you can make your decision first and then the COMCOM could come in afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
I think maybe we might want to add that 20-foot length, if you will, or width, if the fire chief indicated as a condition as well, that they may be maintained.
Hello? Yeah, we got you, Richard, we got you, we heard. So are you okay with the number of spaces?
Quite honestly, I wish it were less, but we are fewer than we started with, so I guess we're going in the right direction.
And how about the idea of the vehicle weight, the gross vehicle weight?
I'm okay with that.
Alright. As I stated last week.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't.
Go ahead.
Just one more question, if I may, I know there was an issue with regards to enforcement and the building inspector had some concerns there. What is the status of that?
I found nothing today, I didn't, didn't ask him, but he didn't say anything about it either, so I don't know.
Good news.
I totally forgot about that, and to be completely honest, I haven't been by the property in the last few days.
I think there are, well, there are still Amazon vans there, at least as of yesterday. And I think there are still some, I'm not exactly sure where the property line is and the zoning lines break off, but looked to me that there might be some back in the residential area. Again, not exactly sure of where the lines are drawn.
My comments now, as far as I'm concerned, I, I don't like the idea of millings or the gravel. They require a lot of regular upkeep, it's gonna be tough to do any kind of upkeep, where there's gonna be all kinds of vehicles parked on top of here, 488 vehicles. Gravel, you, we do have some neighbors on that one, you know, backside, I forget the exact which direction it was, but we do have neighbors back there, residents. Vehicles moving around in the summer, there's be a lot of dust, I, I can see that being a small issue. I have a feeling that this, if it's gravel or millings, it's going to not be done by a contractor who does this all the time, it's going to be done his own manpower. There's no guarantee that things are gonna be done, you know, quote unquote right, as far as the construction industry is concerned with the right amount of base, the rights of subcompaction, et cetera, et cetera. I get a feeling this could be a muddy mess in a matter of year or so. I'm not okay with the amount of vehicles back there, but that's my opinion, one out of four. I do want to have stated for the record though, the number of trips, we've kind of gone around the need for a traffic study, the police chief has asked about the number of trips, and then I know that we've asked this a couple of times before, but it sounds like we're getting really close to a vote. So Jason, if you can give us one more time for the record, or Peter, how many trips will be, will this will be coming from the site on an either daily or weekly basis?
I did ask, you know, the one day I asked, you know, I said, what, you know, what do you guys do? And it's like 10 guys will move six vehicles like on average per day, so if I had to guess on the amount of traffic flow, it would be probably somewhere around one-third of the traffic flow that flows in and out of here now. So it'll be, it'll be, you know, considerably less. You know, because there's a lot, like I said, Enterprise rents a lot of cars and when the driving range was open, you know, that could be 50 cars in a day, on a busy day, and, you know, and traffic was never an issue, ever.
Yep.
Yeah, so it'll be a lot less than that.
Alright, so six trips per day basically is the, the thought. And even if, and I'm not trying to nail you down to say exactly five or six, I realize that you're, you're thinking that there's gonna be actual less than six a day. But I think that if we go with a higher number of six per day, that would be a target that, you know, assuming that we get it to a vote and assuming that everything goes in a positive direction for the applicant here, I'd like to have some kind of a idea of what trips per day we're looking at. So just for example, if there are, we're targeting six right now, and if there happen to be 10 or 11, if there are 25 or 30 every day for, you know, a couple of weeks, I think that we might have to revisit this as for.
This isn't, this isn't. There would normally be probably 100 cars that would pull in and out of this lot daily with the driving range, the body shop, and the rent-a-car, so.
Right, but we're not going for a driving range or for a rental car.
Yeah, but if we had.
Application right now, we're just going for something else. And with 488 vehicles being parked out there, there's just a concern that I have, that maybe some of the, some of the other residents of Dudley might have there being more than the six or 10 or 15 per day, but there might be 50 or 100, and if these all happen at certain times, it could be an issue.
Yeah, if there's 100 a day now, when everything's flowing and it's busy and there's never an issue, you know, put it at 100. It's still not an issue. You know what I mean? It's not gonna be that much, it's gonna be, you know, like I said, the average day, they said they move six cars.
Some days it might. Not the amount, it's, it's the times of when these vehicles are moving, if they're all delivery vans and there's 100 of them coming out at 6 o'clock or 6:30 in the morning.
It's not gonna be delivery vans, we should get away from the delivery vans, okay.
I understand, what I'm trying to say is this, I'm trying to say is this, is that we need to have some kind of a framework for the amount of trips per day, because we're basically waiving a requirement of a traffic study. So we're okay with that, the police chief seems to be okay with that, Billy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't spoken with him directly, but based on the email. So if we can kind of keep the traffic amount of trips per day to what you're thinking they're going to be, I don't see any issues going forward, but if for some reason in six months from now, they're completely crazy, 20 times as much, 10 times as much, maybe something that we have to revisit, maybe it's something that the police chief would like to revisit.
Actually, a question?
Yeah.
Dan, you brought up a good point as far as like timing of when these cars are coming in and out. Peter, do these cars, they come in on a car carrier?
Uh, sometimes. You know, like a, like a two, like a two-car carrier or something like that, but those vehicles will pull right in into the back parking lot here, and like they're completely off the road. It's not like down the road where they stop traffic crossing the fire station or anything and they have to back in or anything like that, it's, it's a simple pull-in and a simple pull-out up here, it's wide.
Actually, that actually wasn't my concern, my concern was I was thinking of as far as time of day, is there a way we could put a limitation that like you know, the operation ceased by a certain time of night, just so you didn't have a situation where you had 11:00 PM on a weeknight, a car carrier coming in there or something like that.
I don't have any major concerns with that, if, if Peter's telling us that there's six per day, and even if there's 20 per day, I can't see all those vehicles coming at once, if they're spaced out over the period of a day, be it a 10 or 12-hour day, that's still only about one or hour. I think we're more than clear. I don't really have any big concerns with that, I'm just trying to say that if we get to a point where we're at 40, 50 vehicles a day, and they're all coming at certain times, that we should be able to revisit this, we should be able to talk about potentially getting a traffic study done to satisfy some of the needs of what we've been hearing from the town itself. Based on what Peter, the information that we're getting right now, it doesn't seem like that's being necessary, and I'm just reiterating that to make sure that we're all on the same page. Are we on the same page? Nope.
So we, we're not gonna limit the site for six vehicle trips per day, are we? I mean, that doesn't seem realistic, I mean, Donuts next door probably has a couple hundred a day, doesn't it?
Well, if it's not realistic, I asked the question, the information didn't come from me, the information came from the applicant. So if it's not realistic, you needed to know what the realistic number is.
I just, I think that, I think six is probably, it doesn't seem.
That's like the average day, some days it might be 20, I don't think it's ever gonna be 100 like it is now. I don't think it's ever gonna be that much. So to, to do a traffic study now would be, to me, just a waste of money and a waste of time, but you know, it's going to be a lot less than the traffic that flows in and out of this location right now. That should be pretty easy for everybody to understand.
Right, it is easy to understand if the vehicles aren't all coming at one point in time, be it in the morning, in the afternoon, for example, beginning of the day or the end of the day. Otherwise, everything that you're saying makes perfect sense, and that's just kind of where I'm trying to go. We don't want to have a situation where we're getting the 50 or 100 vehicles all coming out at one time and all coming back in at the same time. But it's from everything that I'm hearing that you say, this is not gonna be the case. Right. Just have it now pointed out for the record, right? Or do you guys see if this is okay?
I guess what Dan's trying to avoid is the situation that Milford had with Amazon, that's what we're trying to avoid.
So it sounds like I'm going to the, the board, the members that are present, we've got three that are in the favor of the asphalt millings. Is that, my understanding is current drawings currently show, the revised drawings currently show gravel, crustone or gravel?
Currently, they show. Yeah, right, right now they show gravel. I mean, the board can make.
Mr. Chairman.
Asphalt millings be used is fine.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
As I recall in the last meeting, Mr. Bannister had some sticker shock when Mr. Perrin mentioned the cost of asphalt. Do we have any numbers with regards to the milling and whether that's a number that Mr. Bannister can live with or not?
I, that's not in our jurisdiction what he's willing to spend or not spend, I mean.
Well, as far as the research that I did, it, it indicated that it was, it was far cheaper than paving, I think Mr. Dewboys would probably have a better idea than us.
No, definitely is much cheaper than, you know, laying down mixed asphalt.
Okay, but more than gravel?
Slightly more than gravel, I would say not much.
Alright, not much.
Is everybody okay with the, with, with millings, or is gravel something you absolutely want to do?
Okay with millings, Jason, you want to do what, three inches, right?
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with three inches of millings. I think it's gonna, I think it would be better for drainage versus just dense grade gravel.
Applicant team is okay with, with the millings?
I'm good, Pete.
Oh yeah, yeah, I'm fine. Alright, um. Any more questions for the board? Are we ready for voting?
So we're good, right? You got, Pete, you all set with, you okay with a guardrail and a limitation on GVWs and time, restriction of time?
Um, I don't, what, what are you thinking on a restriction for time, just because?
I need to pick your brain on that.
Well, I, I'll be honest with you, they, they, the operation stops at 4:30, but occasionally, because you never know where the guys are coming from and how much traffic, if a delivery driver, you know, can't get here till 10 o'clock, you know, I'd hate to see the guy sleep in his truck, because then we wouldn't take him after nine to, to not go home to sleep with, you know, be home with his family, you know what I mean, I'm, I'm kind of one of those, it's not, it's not a, it's definitely not something that's normal, that, you know, they're not gonna pick cars up at 2 o'clock in the morning. You know, that's not, that's not how the operation works.
I, I would propose 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, unless somebody has a strong feeling about otherwise. I just don't want to see trucks coming in at 2:00 AM in the morning.
Even 11, coming in at 11 at night is late. Especially if you're in the houses bit in the back. What's the earliest do you think they get there, Pete? What's the earliest?
Um, I mean, the operation pretty much goes from 8 to 4:30, but like I said, there's so many things that can screw up a delivery with traffic.
So if we gave you operations, say, seven, the operations can start at seven till no later, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
Yeah, I mean, I hate to argue with you guys because it goes on for hours, but I, I, well, you know, here it is, what do I do? When a guy comes with a delivery, I gotta tell him, no, don't drop it off, I know you, three hours from here to get home, you're gonna have to sleep in your truck until 7:00 AM? I mean, I'm not that kind of guy, you know.
I think, I think we're, we're already talking about some situations here where the rules have been a little bit bent or, you know, so I, I think when you're talking about the rare occasion where that occurs.
Yeah, it would be a rarity.
The chief is gonna run up there and, and, you know, slap the shackles on somebody, quite frankly, I think we just want to have something down on paper so we can say, hey, this is not gonna be a recurring, regular thing where trucks are coming in.
There you go. Put it down, yeah, yeah, like a normal operation between like seven and nine, and then no excessive deliveries after nine o'clock, you know what I mean, so it's not like they could come in every night at nine or something like that, or 10 or 11. You know, it's, that's not the normal, but I know, I did see some of the guys, you know, last year I talked to the guys, they live far away, the guys like tomorrow I'm gonna be in Georgia, you know, these guys don't stop that move vehicles. You know, they have to, you know, and I, I, I'm not the kind of guy that likes to screw somebody up for something that's never gonna matter. You know what I mean, it's not, I pull through here all the time, I pull through here, 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, I'm always on patrol, you know, my truck is kind of loud, no one ever complains.
I think one thing to point out too is the loading zone is like 500 feet to the, you know, closest house. So even if a truck did come in, you know, 500 feet away through, through the, through the fence and the trees that are along nearby budding properties, I don't know how much they'd really, you know, hear the truck idling, even if it did, if that did happen, but.
You know, and no one around here sleeps with their windows open, it's, everybody's got either the heat on or the air conditioning going, I mean, it's not like 50 years ago.
And we had to discuss some additional plantings along that back line too, is, that's still on the table?
Definitely.
Yep, that's still there.
Peter said 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. What do you think of that, Lou? I mean. What do you think of that, Lou? I mean, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it. And and if it happens occasionally, it's okay. It's just we've got guidelines if it gets out of control.
Yeah.
That's the whole thing. We just need some type of something in writing and guidelines that can be enforced by the uh building inspector if it gets out of control. But if it happens occasionally, I I don't see it being an issue. But if it's every night and then we get big trucks rolling in and they're unloading 10 cars, well, we're gonna have a problem.
Jason, I'd like to ask you about the striping issue that's come up, that paint seems to wear off fairly rapidly. How often would you suggest that the lines be restriped?
Well, I was gonna talk about that, you know, when when I had a a chance to, but so basically in in the parking lot, I showed, I showed like signage at the beginning and the end of the rows to kind of alleviate the need for for the striping to be, you know, maintained or even done. Um, you know, we do have a sign, if you can zoom in on the plan and see it, there's a sign at at, you know, basically at the beginning and the end of every row and and, you know, it would say something like parking between the signs or or whatever. Um, and talking to, you know, again, Jeff Walsh from Graves, like he mentioned that, you know, like they do at Wachusett Mountain, this is going to be the same situation where the management is going to have to just, you know, make sure that the vehicles are parking where they're supposed to be parked.
And with that sign, Jason, would that signage ensure the 20 feet that the fire chief was asking for?
Well, right now we have a, we have aisle widths of 24 feet, so that would give, you know, four foot buffer besides.
Okay, and and again, my concern was not so much in the parking area, but the access too, as you're coming off West Main. What I think I observed the other day was something less than 20 feet just getting in there. The way parks, vehicles are parked and I think it was a uh a refuse container of some sort, it just looked a little tight. I think that's maybe as critical as any dimension that you're gonna have in the parking lot as far as the fire department's concerned.
Yeah, Pete, you'll just have to make sure that there's, you know, 20 feet along the side of the existing building on the entrance in and out.
I mean, I can swing my fire truck in, but yeah, I'll make sure that they can.
Well, it's just that the 20 feet was what the the chief had specified and I would like to stay uh stay with that.
Yeah, I'm down with that.
Pete, can you make uh some of the other tenants in the building keep their vehicles away from the fire lane so they don't encroach on that 20 foot width?
Um, I can tell you what I have done is I put up huge no parking signs. And I even at one point employed someone to sit in a chair on Saturdays to tell people to move their cars. Because I don't know if you know this, but people are gonna do what they want, even if you tell them. So it's really hard, but I'm gonna do everything I can.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
Yeah, I've huge.
Plenty of that going around.
Yeah, no, I've I've huge no parking signs and people park right next to them and you could, you could you know, tell them, hey, you you got, you can't park there. I'm only gonna be a minute. You know, this is why I've listened to people for 20 years. I can't even. But yeah, definitely, I'm I've, I'm all about keeping that entrance and exit open and I always have been.
And Mr. Chairman, you looking for a motion?
Um, I just wanted to make sure I I just, I heard you ask about what Peter thought about the guard rail requirement. I wasn't quite sure I heard a response from Peter.
Actually, if if I could just also discuss that, the back of the parking lot has a three foot wide riprap channel. So I'm not sure if that would.
That's not what I'm talking about. That's not, I don't think that's what Lou and I were.
Right, but isn't the point of it to keep the, this is to keep the vehicles from going through it? So again, I don't know that they're gonna be able to drive through a three foot riprap channel. So I'm just not sure.
So where does this riprap channel go? Does it go around the whole?
It does. It goes along the entire lower section and it wraps right up around almost to almost to the building. That's how all the drainage is getting to the to the detention area.
Bill, can you put up the uh, Bill, can you just put up the site plan real quick? Jason, I gotta ask you though.
Yeah.
We've compromised on traffic study. We've compromised on
paved surface.
We've compromised on painted services. I mean, the board's asking for a guard rail and you're gonna ask us to compromise again?
I I'm not, I'm not trying to to be like that. I just, if it's, if it's the, you know, the purpose of keeping vehicles from from driving through it, I just feel like it's redundant if there's already a kind of a block there.
Because anything can be changed.
Can you zoom in, Bill? Can you zoom into the back lot there?
Sure.
So I see the plan.
See, the riprap isn't even along the edge of the pavement, is it? No.
No, it's three foot wide riprap, but it's only three feet wide. How high is it?
It's also 20 feet away from the edge of the pavement. All right, you see that, Lou? We've got the edge of the pavement. Yeah, we got 20 some feet and then we have the riprap.
Yeah.
Their idea was is to have the guard rail at the edge of the pavement so that it can't be expanded out towards the wetlands.
That's correct.
Yeah, so that line that on the plan we're looking at right now, the line that has a uh, it's pointed to that says drainage flow dissipator spaced 100 feet as shown. I I'm not talking about the drainage flow dissipator line, but the actual boundary of the uh of the parking lot there where it goes up to a radius of 20. Um, that's where I think we're talking about that we want to see the barrier.
Okay.
Lou, that's what you meant, right?
Say again, Steve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um. The the plan right now uh on the screen, if you see where it says drainage flow dissipator spaced 100 feet as shown, there's a lot, it's pointing to the boundary line that I'm talking about.
And that's where I would like to see the guard rail.
I would agree with that. That's why, and and that a- as as we were just saying, Jason, that's that's pretty actually that's at least like 20 feet away from where the riprap is. And the three feet of riprap, I mean, I wouldn't drive across it with my Nissan, but anything else, no problem.
Okay.
I mean, it's, yeah, so from the last parking space, you guys have 24 feet, so 24 feet off the last parking spot should be a guard rail all along the back.
As a uh, and it, as opposed to a guard rail, would you think a chain link fence would be necessary for security purposes?
Um, I I'm okay with either. I would just think a wooden guard rail would be cheaper.
Okay.
If you see where it says drainage flow dissipator spaced 100 feet as shown, there are any purposes.
I can hear myself.
I know.
Volume's a little, audio is a little sketchy.
So Jason, you'll need to revise the plan to show millings and then we'll need a detail, I believe.
Okay. So Bill, what are our voting requirements? Simple majority?
Correct. You need at least, well, you need three votes, Dan.
And then we we've mentioned a number of items that we'd like to see. When we make a motion, do we have to list all of these items?
Well, um I'm gonna have to draft the decision that'll add those conditions in it. Um, if you want, I can go ahead and try to do that and then we can vote on the decision at the next meeting. Uh, or we can try to list all the conditions you want to put in it and then I'll just incorporate those into the decision and uh then you can go ahead and approve that.
Okay.
Jason and Peter, what do you guys think? If we vote on it right now on the conditions that we've talked about in the meeting and that Bill drafts up the order conditions afterwards? Is that okay? Or do you want us to wait for the order conditions so we can?
No, no, let's, let's do it tonight.
All right, then. If someone wants to, yes, Steve.
I hate to bring it up, but we didn't get an answer as to how many vehicles were still in the residential area now, which would currently be in violation. And my concern is if we approve anything tonight, are those, are we just basically letting those vehicles continue to stay there until he moves them to do the actual asphalt millings? How does this work? How many vehicles are there right now, Peter, in the residential area on that gravel?
Let me count. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18. There's probably somewhere around 25, 28, something like that from where I'm at.
Okay, and two weeks ago, two weeks ago at the last meeting, did we not request that those vehicles that were currently in violation be removed or am I wrong on that?
No, we didn't. Cause I would, we did that at the at the second meeting and then I moved them. And then when you guys gave me the thumbs up, I said, okay, good. And then we put some vehicles back. I could jam them into the parking lot over here. Um, but like I said, there's no point except for it's be on one side of the 500 feet or the other side.
Okay, I apologize. It's coming back to me now. I I think I do recall we had a conversation about that the vehicles there for the time being, we would, we would just let them continue to stay until we we work this all out.
Yes, I believe we uh decided to uh concur with Nelson Berlin game's opinion that he could have up to 100 vehicles there while he was seeking the site plan approval.
Okay, all right. So my question to the other board members is, do we continue to allow that up to 100 vehicle uh limit to stay on during the construction of the lot or how does, how is that gonna work?
Mr. Chairman, if I heard correctly, I think Bill just stated that the condition was until the site plan was approved. And I assume that to mean that after approval, those vehicles would be moved. Is that correct or is that correct?
Well, I think it's up to the board to to make that determination.
Make it, okay.
So so I I guess that's why I brought it up, Dan. I just wanted to make sure that we we we're clear on that. So it's not a question of that Peter's not sure whether or not he can or can't keep those vehicles there after approval until the, you know, the the work is done.
Well, Peter has indicated, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, uh, Peter has indicated that uh his current customer is going away at some point. Uh, is there going to be a a period of time in which there is there, or you have no customer and then you would do whatever modifications you need to do in terms of the milling, the guard rails and anything else that's been discussed to the property? Or are you gonna, is it gonna be one continuous build or make as you go operation?
Rich, I I I think what he meant when he he meant current customer, I think he meant current tenant, which would be enterprise rent a car would be vacating the building.
Well, I thought he meant the Amazon guys were going away.
Guys, give me stuff.
Excuse me, wasn't it the Amazon folks that were going away, Peter?
He uh, yeah, this is only temporary. Um, I would like to get this company um permanently, but I need to get like this approval, present that to them to see if that would be sufficient to them and then move forward with the construction.
All right, so Amazon is still in the game. I think my understanding was that Amazon was was fading out.
The Amazon isn't really, it's, this is only like a this is like a special deal for this company that this isn't like a normal thing. This is like Amazon had this big growth spurt, so all of a sudden they needed a whole bunch of vans, you know, maybe there'll be a permanent customer, but not at the level they're at now. Um, you know, that's up to them. But I need this approval to try and, you know, get get this company to stay or get another company to come in. You know, that's where I'm at. I'm I'm kind of at a, I'm at a catch 22.
So if I could just address the board real quick, I'm having a hard time understanding what the difference is about the vehicles. We have um stated that we're allowing 100 vehicles on the lot right now until this gets approved. Once it's approved, it has to be built. Once it's built, it has to be basically, Nelson has to sign off on it at that point in time. In theory, 488 vehicles can be parked on that. I don't see any problem allowing the 100 vehicles to be on the lot until once it's finished and they're on 488. Am I misunderstanding anything or?
Nope. No, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that, that that would be our position. That's all. That way Peter would know either way.
Sounds good.
All right, so who wants to make this crazy motion?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, you read this multi-part monster that we have here?
Dan, do you want to uh close the public hearing first?
Yes.
Or do you want to keep the hearing open until we have the draft decision to review?
I think we close the meeting first, all right, Bill?
Well, the only, the only problem I have with voting tonight is because the the current plan doesn't show the location of the guard rail uh and it doesn't show the asphalt millings. I know we could just say, well, that, you know, provided that that change is made. I think the guard rail is a little bit of a stickier issue just because it's very hard with us doing this through Zoom to actually make sure that our intentions of where this guard rail would be located are clear. I I know Peter's really anxious to get approval done tonight. Um I don't know whether or not there's you know, what 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 does the board think? Do we really want to try and just add all of these provisions? Or would it be better to have the plan revised to show our requirements as far as the guard rail and the millings go and then vote on that plan?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep, go for it.
I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think we are setting something of a precedent here and uh I think with that in mind, it's to everyone's advantage if we have all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted before we uh jump the gun.
I, isn't, isn't the guard rail just gonna go on the entire eastern side of the parking lot? I mean, it's gonna go along the entire edge. It's the whole eastern portion from what I understand.
Yes.
So, I mean, it doesn't seem like much of a, all it is is a note for the milling, so I mean, it's not a huge you know.
Fire lane, let's not forget that. Fire lane.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to add anything to the plan for that. That's, that's already on there.
Lou, what do you think about the voting tonight?
I'm okay with the vote and it's gonna be on record.
Thank you.
Um, it it's on record and um.
Oh, yeah, so it's just a matter, I guess, of how do you want to word it to uh, that's the eastern side of the parking lot? I'm actually looking at, yeah, okay, I see the the north seeking arrow there. So, yeah, that would be the the.
Yeah, I concur with Lou is that I I think that this is a, we had this being recorded. Uh, everything has been pretty clear. Uh, as as far as the three inch millings, the three and a half of that slope, the restrictions on the gross vehicle weight, the location of the guard rail being at the eastern edge of the pavement. I think we've talked about the traffic access management. We've talked about the chief's, fire chief's concerns. Peter's responsibility there, conservation commission input. I think everything's right there. I I think that um I think that we're ready for a vote on this. I think that we just have to word the the motion to make sure that we call, make sure that we go either, make sure that they're asked, Bill, to go through and make sure that we have in the order conditions the things we've spoken about. And my big fear is if we don't vote tonight, that we're gonna have a two hour discussion again next time. And I, I don't want to do that.
Okay, all right. We'll just get everything, we'll get everything in as far as our requirements tonight and we'll vote on it tonight and we'll go from there.
So I think so too. So if you guys want to give me a motion?
Oh, God, that's a long list.
Well, I mean, to what it was.
Do we, do we close the public, Mr. Chairman, do we close the public meeting, uh, public meeting first or do we vote?
My only concern about closing the public meeting right now is that we're gonna have revised plans that we wanted to take a peek at.
Okay, correct, yes.
Yes. My concern about closing the public meeting right now is that we're gonna have a revised plan next time, with just a couple notes on it that we we want to take a look at just to make sure everything's in there, correct?
Yes, and you'll have a draft decision too that you can
Yep.
critique as well.
All right. So I think that if we, if if someone wants to make a motion that we we're looking for approval of the plan, right? Is this, is the site plan review, Bill?
Yes.
With the conditions as discussed during this meeting or something to that effect, I think that we can go back and Bill can go through everything that we've talked about and get them 100% right.
Or I could jot down a quick list right now, go through it, and if the board agrees that I've got everything on the list, we could just put it right in the, right in the motion.
That's fine too.
Well, Bill, why don't you make the motion? Well, Bill, why don't you make the motion? Steve, maybe make the motion then.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to make sure I, I get everything. So, guys, we, we talked about a max GBW of 16,000.
Correct.
Construction of guardrail on the eastern, along the eastern limit, along eastern limit.
Along the entire eastern limit.
Along entire, all right, entire eastern limit of parking area.
Correct, or asphalt milling zip.
Parking, parking area as shown on plan, right? Well, I meant the parking area shown on the plan. I don't mean the guardrails shown on the plan. Well, I guess we don't need to put that last part. So along eastern limit, along entire eastern limit of parking area. Does that sound good?
Correct.
Okay, asphalt millings.
Three inches.
Three inches. And do we have to define that area, or is that just?
That would be the parking area.
Parking area, asphalt millings of three inches on parking area. We don't need to mention the 20-foot fire lane because that's implied, correct?
That's correct.
Right? Time, what, what did we decide for a time? 7:00 AM?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, yeah.
9:00 PM. Would you say operations limited to?
Correct.
All right, need to mention the Conservation Commission at all in that?
Yeah, I would.
It's pretty cool. No, okay.
Applicant applicant shall file notice of intent.
Yes.
Notice of intent with Conservation Commission. All right, let me just read this list real quick, guys, and if we're all good, then I'll make the motion.
Trips per day. Trips per day.
Oh. And what, what did we decide on that?
The number given to us was six.
I'm sorry, Dan, it's unrealistic to me, Dan, with a 488-inch-based lot. That doesn't really fit with the intensity of the use.
What number should we use?
That's about 83-plus days of inventory sitting around at 488 and six a day.
Just need a number.
100?
100 trips per day?
Yeah.
It's really not that much. 100, 100 a day. Dunkin' Donuts probably does 100 between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock in the morning.
The courthouse probably does 100.
Yeah.
We're not asking for, we're not trying to approve a courthouse or Dunkin' Donuts here. We're approving a lot for leased vehicles. We should have a realistic number for how many leased vehicles will be leaving that lot per day. And I mean, you guys want to change this to Dunkin' Donuts or to a courthouse?
No.
Then let's give us a number for leased vehicles per day, please. We can just vote, we can vote in two weeks. I mean, come on, guys.
I'd recommend 100.
I'm going to ask for a traffic report, then, a traffic study.
100 cars onto Main Street in one day from a parking lot is absolutely nothing.
I mean, again, for the fourth time, for a Dunkin' Donuts, it's an operation for 14 hours a day for 100 vehicles per day, all kind of zoomed over those 14 hours. You're right, it's no big deal. For 100 vehicles all coming out between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning, and coming back at 4:30 and 5:00 in the afternoon, it's a big deal.
I believe the traffic engineer is the one that said that the leased parking lot would be absolutely no impact at all to this intersection. Isn't that correct, Pete?
Yeah, he said there's actually no way to do the traffic comparison because there's no such study done against for a lease company, but I did ask them. They said the average they move is six vehicles a day. You know, I don't want to, I don't make it whatever you think will be sufficient enough. We don't, so we don't have to do a traffic study. 25?
I mean.
Dan, what are you happy with?
Dan, and 100, 100 cars divided over eight hours is 12.5 cars per hour. I don't really see a problem with 100 cars. That's just my opinion. 100 moves.
What's that a car?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there are, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there are times in the day when West Main is pretty congested, and speaking specifically in terms of late afternoon. And I know with the pandemic, we have kind of a false sense of what that looks like. But when people get going back to work and everybody's up and running, so to speak, I think we'll have that impact. I think the key is not so much the number, but the when part of it.
Can I just bring up a point here that I don't think we're taking into account, which is, my understanding is, I mean, these vehicles are unregistered, so they're coming in on a car carrier. And Peter, do you know, do they put plates on them there and then drive them out, or do they also leave on car carriers?
They deliver them. The, the vehicles go, they don't come back. They're not going to be back and forth. They're not going to park.
No, no, I, I understand that. What I, what I mean to say is, when they deliver them, do they, are they still unregistered at the point that they're delivered? Do they leave on car carriers also?
Sometimes, it, yeah, it depends, yeah. You know, sometimes they'll come in unregistered, and sometimes they'll leave unregistered.
So we might actually be talking about actual vehicles going in and out might actually be quite a low number. Those vehicles might be big vehicles, but in other words, I think we're getting hung up on the actual number of individual vehicles, and the reality is a car carrier could be pulling in there and have nine, nine vehicles on it, correct?
I don't think they use the car carriers that big, although they maybe at some point could. They typically carry two vehicles, the trailers. You know, and I did ask, I said, hey, what are the numbers? Because, you know, if I need a traffic study, we'll get one. And the guy says, typically, we move six cars. You know, that's their typical. They have 10 drivers. They have vehicles that trail those vehicles. So, you know, it's, you know, maybe with the employees and stuff like that, maybe it's going to be 20 or 25, but it's not, it's not going to be 300 or 400 or something crazy like, you know, like we're talking the courthouse or Dunkin' Donuts or church getting out, or any of those crazy things. It's nothing like that.
How about 50, Pete? Is, is 50 fair?
I was just going to say, that's exactly what I was going to say, Lou. How about 50?
We'll go with 50. I'm okay with 50.
Yeah, because like I said, this location now, on a, on a busy day, would do 100, and it would be no problem at all. You don't, you'd never even notice.
And I don't know who's going to sit out there and count them unless it really does become a problem like Dan, Dan is concerned about.
I'll sit here with anybody who wants to sit here with me. I'm that kind of guy. I'll sit here with anybody on the board.
I'm not sitting out there and watching cars. To hell with that. I mean, we'll put the stipulation in, and so you, you know, if it gets violated, somebody else can go out there and force it.
There you go.
You okay with 50, Dan?
I'm okay with 50, yes. But in my experience, when an applicant comes in front of the board, the applicant names a number. The board usually doesn't determine the number for them. That's my frustration. We got a number from the applicant.
Okay.
But 50 trips is, if that's what the number we want to agree on, that's fine. So the only thing that we're missing is the pitch. If you want to put that right in there. Everything else, as far as my notes, we've got in there. What do we miss?
We're, we are limiting this to a leased vehicle company, correct?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't understand your last question, Dan.
The pitch or the slope of the millings?
It was two and a half percent, right?
It's about three. It's around 3% in the parking lot. Yeah.
I think maybe any change to the parking lot would have to come back to the planning board for at least a minor modification.
My understanding, yep. All right, we've got all the items. Looking for a motion.
Steve, you took all.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make this motion. I'm going to use this list that I wrote in front of me. If there's anything else, somebody can make an amendment, correct? Okay, I'm, I'm going to assume somebody said okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve a plan to allow the operation of a lease company parking area in, as an accessory use in a residential area with the following limitations or provisions. Maximum GBW weight of any one vehicle capped at 16,000 pounds. The construction of a guardrail along the entire eastern limit of the parking area. The application of asphalt millings to a thickness of three inches on the parking area. Operations time restricted between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And the applicant shall fire and file a notice of intent with Conservation Commission, and a cap on the maximum number of vehicle trips per day in and out of 50 vehicles per day.
I would second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve major site plan review for 263 West Main Street for the leasing of vehicles, parking of leased vehicles with the orders of conditions as read by member Steve. Vote, we'll vote here by roll call. Steve? Steve, your vote?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Yes.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Dan, against. Three to one, motion carries. So we'll meet in two weeks, go over the, the planned revisions, go over the order conditions that Bill will get squared away, and then we'll be good to go, more or less, correct? We have the appeals period, is there appeals period, Bill?
Excuse me?
Is there an appeals period?
No, not on a site plan.
All right. Excellent. All right. Big thank you for the, Steve, what's up?
Dan, I'm sorry. I may have completely flaked on this, but did we close the public hearing?
No, we didn't. We did not.
So, but it, were we supposed to close the public hearing before we took the vote, Bill?
No, we, we talked about that, and the idea was is that we're going to have plans to review and order conditions to go over. And so that, we need to get it two weeks. That's all right. When we meet in two weeks, we'll go over those, and then we'll close the hearing, and we'll be good to go.
I'm still a first year, so you have to.
All right. Jason, Peter?
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry this is going out so long, but
Yep.
Appreciate you working with us.
Sounds good. Have a good night. Thanks.
You too.
Good night.
All right. Trying to find my agenda. One second. It is now 8:07. 7:30 PM on the schedule is Tobin Farms. We're not ready for that, correct, Bill?
Yes. Excuse me, the we had a conversation with town council about whether that was ready to go to town meeting for acceptance, and there's a number of issues that haven't been completed yet. So it's really not ready to go forward at this point in time. So I think the town bylaw requires that only street acceptances go forward at a spring town meeting. So I don't think we'll be able to do it in the fall unless we can get that changed somehow. So it looks like it would have to be in the spring of 2021 that that street acceptance would come back. There were a number of things that still have to be done. There's a number of plans and documents that need to be submitted. The guardrail that was supposed to be constructed is hasn't been completed yet, although I understand it's going to be done soon. Well, the site will need to hold a layout hearing, so the number of loose ends that need to be tied up before we go to town meeting. So we have enough time, obviously, to, to wrap that all up for next year.
All right. Next agenda item. Approval of the minutes from the May 27th meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read those? Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the, the planning board May 27, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting. May 27th, as submitted, you need to vote. Richard, your vote?
Aye.
I don't know, I'm using audio here.
Yeah, I, I did you call for my vote, Dan?
I called for Richard's. I'll take Steve's now. Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Is my audio messed up?
It appears to be a little bit.
It's the internet, Dan. It's not really your audio. It's just kind of choppy.
All right, so, Richard, can you hear me all? Do you want to vote? All right, I'm voting aye. Can we move on, Bill?
Sure.
So there's no A and R plans, but I see? Anything there?
No.
All right. Any final inspections associated with site plans?
No.
Planner's plate. Anything else for us?
I guess just to back up a second, Dan.
Yep.
On Eisenhower Drive, I talked to the sewer superintendent on Monday, and he said that he's expecting to get his crew back to full force by next week, so he's hoping to begin construction of repairing the sewer pump station either next week or the following week. So that should be in the works fairly soon. And then he wants to have someone come in and inspect a pump. There are two pumps in there, so to inspect the pumps to make sure that they are in decent shape. And then we'll, we'll take it from there in terms of what other work needs to be done, but I think he's hoping that we can get that project wrapped up over the summer.
Sounds good. Anything else on the planner's plate?
I had sent you out a letter of support for the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness grant application. We're proposing to apply for some engineering analysis up to preliminary plans to determine second needs of egress at the Shepherd Hill Mason, Shepherd Hill Middle School. Secondly, at the Mason Road School, and thirdly, at the Highway Garage area. We would submit the application next week. And I think we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about $50,000, $60,000. The town has a 25% match of that. And so far, I've been gathering letters of Um, and uh, so far I've been gathering letters of support from the highway superintendent, uh, the fire chief. And uh, the superintendent of the regional high school. So I think it's a really worthwhile project. It came up as part of the um. Uh, can uh, community resiliency building workshop that we held back in January. As one of the highest priorities to make the town more resilient in terms of climate change. So I would uh, hope that you would uh. Uh, support that project and uh, authorize me and or Dan to sign that, that letter.
Should we vote on that authorization?
Mr. Chairman, would it be in order to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, definitely.
All right. All right then, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve the letter regarding the MPV, municipal vulnerability preparedness. Uh, action grant proposal as presented by the town planner.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call for the vote. Lou? Yes. Richard?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
All right, and myself as well, unanimous, passed. What else we have, Bill?
Uh, did you want to talk about town meeting, Dan?
Yes.
Uh, so town meeting is coming up and planning board has, where there is a zoning article that was submitted by the board of selectmen. To modify the bill conversion overlay district. Typically, uh, at town meeting, uh, the planning board will be asked to submit a report. With a recommendation, the boys already taken that vote. So just wanted to ask, what's the normal procedure for the planning board to. Uh, deal with zoning articles at town meeting?
I don't know if I can answer that a hundred percent. My understanding is the town meeting is a twenty-second, correct?
Uh, is that right, Michelle?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And it's usually at seven o'clock, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so planning board usually meets um, before the town meeting. Uh, six fifteen should do it. Six thirty might be a little bit tight. Or we get together to, just to kind of, yes, Michelle?
Excuse me, um, we have a special town meeting at six thirty.
At six thirty?
Right, it'll be one article.
Oh, makes it easy.
So it has to be prior to that, I guess.
Yep. Yeah, so we should probably meet there at, at six. Just if, if there's anything to discuss, any last minute items or not, uh, usually the planning board will go into the town meeting. If called upon by board of selectmen or the town moderator, we would answer any questions that uh, could be before us. So that should be our next meeting, then should be on Monday. June twenty-second at six, at the Shepherd Hill. We're doing that live, right? We'll be doing that online.
Live.
Live, excellent. Music to my ears. We're all gonna be masked or we?
Ringing my mask.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So we also gonna be done the twenty-fourth then, Bill?
Yes, I think we decided to do that already to finalize the decision.
Yep, excellent, exactly, all right. Anything else on the planner's plate?
Uh, no.
Anybody else, planning board, have any, any comments, any questions? Yeah, if there are no questions or anything, somebody want to make a motion to?
Dan, I, I do have some invoices.
All right.
I'll pull them up for you, we, um, from Graves Engineering primarily. Let me just pull them up in a second. So we have four invoices, some of them. Um, I'm not sure whether you had approved some of these in the past or not. Uh, but the town accountant was looking for uh, approval of these invoices. I'm not sure whether. Uh, they just got lost in the shuffle or what happened, but there are a couple of old ones and then one new one. So this one is um. For twenty-four Oxford Avenue, the JD and D project, seventy-five dollars. Is itemized by Grace below. Uh, the second one is also twenty-four Oxford. Avenue. I'm sorry, this one is for, for pure punt. Um. This one has been partially paid. There's a balance here of uh, seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents out of this original amount. Uh, the third one is also twenty-four Oxford Avenue, a thousand eighty dollars. And then um, the one that we got in today for two sixty-three West Main Street for one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. I can go over these in more detail if you want to see them, but uh, that's just a quick summary.
These are being paid from towns funds or from escrow funds?
From escrow.
All of them?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as you're okay with the itemized.
Chairman, we need a motion to approve.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that uh. We approve payment of the invoices as presented by the town planner.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, vote, vote by roll, roll call. Lou? Yes. Richard?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Anything else, planners plate, that we need to talk about?
Nope.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
I hope I get a quick second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I guess I gotta take another roll call, Lou? Yes. Richard?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself as well, aye. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Michelle, Bill, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
See you on the twenty seconds.
Yep.
Stay healthy. Stay healthy. Take care.
Good luck, Richard.
Thank you. Good night.